May 23rd, 2022, Select Board Meeting is being recorded.
Thank you and good evening and welcome to the Select Board Meeting for Monday, May 23rd, 2022. I'd like to point out that we have myself, Russ Fox, Vice Chairman, Clerk Doug Moglen, newly-elected Selectman Jason Perron, Chief Administrative Steinhardt has not joined us yet on Zoom, and Administrative Assistant Robin Solak. If we could please rise to the pledge of allegiance, Art, would you do the honors of start?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on the agenda is public comments. I'd ask anybody that's willing to make a public comment, please stand, state your name. I'd ask that you come forward so that people on Zoom could hear you. I saw two hands go up. We're gonna go over here.
Good evening. In the hotel at 141 Pine Road, and I just wanted to say welcome Jason Perron on behalf of the citizens of Southwick.
Would it be appropriate to add comments on 141 Pine River to do that now or later in the agenda of what we're speaking about?
Public comments. If you're gonna do public comments, you do it now, please.
Sure. Michelle Pratt, 152 Berkshire Ave, President of Citizens Restoring Panama. And so I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of CRC. I want to be clear that CRC is very much in favor of the restaurants being restored and back in business at 141 Pine Mountain Road. We think that's awesome. We'd be very much in favor of transient docks on the property so that people can access it from the lake and help boost their business. If those docks were limited to 75 feet, 150 feet is just a very long ways out into the water. I'll talk about that in a sec. But, so we are absolutely in favor of that. But we are not in favor of having an additional marina on that property. We feel that the lake is already extremely overcrowded. Everybody knows that. It's, you just have to look out the, you know, look out at it and you'll, and you'll see the number of boats. We feel that LMC did their due diligence and really researching what's kind of expected for safety per acre for the number of boats. And they checked a number of sources and we feel confident in their presentation. And they are unanimous in also not buying marina on that property for a number of reasons that you guys already addressed, so I won't hold on to. So CRC supports that. We feel like they are, the town board whose job that is to look into all of that and give that feedback, and they've done so. And so we're concerned that we feel like that's not been given the amount of weight it should be given concerning their knowledge and expertise regarding the lake. So for us, we feel like it's a safety issue. We also feel like it's an environmental issue as well. More boats is more pollution, more trash, things like that. In terms of the safety issue, a big piece that we feel besides overcrowding is the navigational issue. If you're familiar with going through the tunnel, you go onto South Pond and it's oriented towards the right, and so you need to come through the tunnel and you take that turn. Then we're gonna have 150-foot docks that are sticking out. And if the transient docks, especially other ones closer to that area, then you have people docking back and forth to get in and out of those. And people come through the tunnel and need to turn right. The people coming from South going back towards Middle Pond have to be able to see through that tunnel to know if it's okay to go through that or not. And it's a really small tunnel, barely fits a pontoon boat, pontoon boats through there. So I really think, I truly believe that's gonna be a huge issue in terms of safety and navigation. So what I would like to ask from you folks tonight is to open the opportunity to create a demonstration. I did go out there over the weekend and did use the drone with GPS. Look at how far out 150 feet is. It's far. And so if you would allow us time to be able to have a demonstration, have folks go out there and go back and forth and mark off where those docks have sticked out to, and see what would it really look in act, look like in action. I don't think you'd get that off a piece of paper where you have just the site plan, those site plans. We would really like to do that. And we would like to be able to present that to you all, you know, so that you can really get a feel for what it would look like up there.
I'm gonna make this the last public comment because we do have a hearing that we are already running late for.
Okay, sorry. Deb Herron, Reshore Road. I am speaking as an LMC member, and I just asked that you reconsider the information that LMC presented to you as a lot of research. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb.
If there's other public comment, we could take it later in the program, correct?
Correct. All right. We are gonna deviate a little from the agenda. We have Fire Chief Anderson here, our newest firefighter, and we'd like to have a little presentation. Brandon Patton. Chief Anderson.
Good evening. So we had Brandon as one of us who is a recent graduate from the Mass Fire Academy. I bet you're spending 12 weeks there. You remember, right? Brandon came to us already a paramedic. And the other half of his requirements were to complete the Fire Academy, which he successfully did. Graduated. And luckily before it got too hot. But with that, with a typical tradition, we'd like the board to present him with a career firefighter helmet. He can do everything.
We do it right next door. Perfect. Congratulations, Chair. All right, next up is a public hearing for May 23rd, 2022. Notice is hereby given pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 166, Section 22 and 22A, that Cell Co. Partnership, DBA Verizon Wireless, has submitted a petition to install a small cell wireless antenna with fixtures on a Wameko pole, number 74V/VZ23, located at 82 Point Grove Road in South Massachusetts. Equipment includes antenna, equipment adds, wires, cables, meter, fiber, D-mark box on the pole. Interested party should attend the Select Board Hearing at Town Hall Auditorium at 6:05 PM on May 23rd, 2022 to hear from the applicant or submit written testimony to the matter. Zoom meeting details will be posted on the town web page at www.southwicmas.org. Public meetings and agendas, the petition and plans can be reviewed at the town clerk's office online at www.southwicma.org/home/pages/towndocuments. Select Board, Town of Southwick, Massachusetts. Do you have a motion to open the hearing?
Doug Moglen will make a motion to open the hearing.
Give me a second. Jason Perron wants a second. Roll call vote. Russ Fox, yes.
Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perron, aye. Okay. Would the applicant like to identify themselves and speak as loudly, loudly as you can to the owl?
Can we come up in this direction?
Absolutely.
Good evening, Deb. Thank you for having us. My name is Paul Foley. I am with Verizon Network Real Estate. And with me is Kip DeVito. He's a radio frequency engineer with Verizon. This is the first small wireless facility that we're bringing to the board for review. So we actually have a few other people available on the Zoom who would also be here and able to answer questions if you have any, have any questions for them. I can identify and introduce them now if that would be helpful.
That would be helpful.
So we have, first we have Dr. Eric Swanson on the Zoom. He is a professor of physics at the University of Pittsburgh. And he's an expert in the field of RF health issues. So if the board or the public has any questions about health issues, he's available to answer any questions. We also have Sean Conway, who is Verizon's Principal Real Estate Engineer for Small Cells in New England. We have Ellen Cummings, who is with Verizon Government Affairs. And we have Corey Vaccaro from Structure Consulting, who is a site acquisition specialist for this location. So I happen to answer any questions you may have on this petition.
I'm gonna open up the hearing. Is there anyone that would like to ask any questions or make any statements at this time? I do not see any hands going up. Is there anyone on Zoom? Oh, I'm sorry. If, if you could please, if, excuse me. Could you please stand, come to the front of the room and state your name and address, please?
Clerk 123rd Street. I just wanted to say that screen turned off for a moment. That's it.
Thank you, Sabrina. I'm fine. Just can't.
Just can't see the answer. Okay. All right, so.
How tall is this thing gonna be?
Well, it's on an existing utility pole.
But is it gonna rise above the existing pole?
No, it's not. It's located on the side of the utility pole at approximately 22 feet. The utility pole, the top of the utility pole is 38 feet, but the, the small antenna will be at 22 feet.
Well, that's the million-dollar question. What does it do?
Well, it helps fill gaps in wireless coverage. As you probably know, everyone has wireless devices these days. Most people don't even have landlines these days. They have cellphones instead of landlines. Most calls to emergency services come from cellphones. So it's important to have a network that is robust. And probably our engineer here could talk a little bit more about what unit is designed to do.
So in this area of the road, we have some feedback, some poor coverage. There's a site that we have that's about a mile to the west. So the problem in this area is typically due to terrain. So I'm sure you're aware of the Edgewood, Edgewood Golf Course. That's just to the west, that in front of our hill. West of that, I mean, a mile away from this area is our site. That's just blocked by that large hill. So this road is actually being covered by two other sites that are fairly far away. One site is about two miles away. It's our Southwick site on, sorry.
Kangamai.
Those older fields there.
Yeah.
And then the other site is actually in Connecticut, our Southfield West Side, which is on Route 168. So that's actually, those two sites are the only sites that are, have a fair shot for this road. And they're just so far away that a small cell would be really helpful.
Right. It's just to boost the signal in a small area. It's a very small, low-power device, so it doesn't cover much ground, but it's designed just to operate in a specific discrete area.
Any other questions? No? If there's no other questions, was there anyone on Zoom that had a question?
Uh, yeah. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah. If you could state your name and address, please.
Yep. Michael Orzlech, 36 Grove Street. Um, so I didn't do too much research into this because I kind of found out about it last minute. But um, I know that in Pittsfield, Massachusetts, that there was a cease and desist order from the, I believe, the Department of Health, where they were talking about the frequencies and that kind of stuff where it's, I believe that they stopped it from happening. But that was just one thing that I got brought up to me last minute that I wanted to ask. And I believe that's probably why they have a doctor on the Zoom call. But what health reasons or concerns are there with this? And if, if anyone could explain what happened in Pittsfield, and if it's still going through Pittsfield, and if, if it's not happening in Pittsfield, is that why it's in Southwick? So that's, those are kind of a, just a broad, quick thinking of questions that I had. But hopefully that makes sense to you guys.
All right, thank you. Who would you like to have answered first?
Well, let's see. I think I'll just start off by saying the Pittsfield situation had to do with a tower, a cell tower, which is different from what we're proposing here. It's not a cell tower. It's just a small device on a utility pole. And I would like to ask, I think Dr. Swanson is probably the best candidate to talk about health-related issues. I know he was having a little trouble connecting, so.
I can jump in now if that's okay, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
We're moving everyone. So there are things out there in the internet and so on with health concerns about this kind of technology, but it's, it's really not warranted. The frequencies that this small cell will operate at are just at the upper end of the usual television or radio frequencies that, you know, your radio in your car works at. There are no known health effects, bad health effects due to radio waves that have ever been verified. The only effect that they do have on human health is, is a very slight amount of heating. The heating is similar to if you were to step out from the shade into the sun. So the sun is very, very bright compared to this small cell, which is a tiny, tiny fraction of that. So because of this heating effect, this infrastructure is regulated by the FCC. And the device that we're talking about here, awkward, if you were to stand right underneath it, you would get about 100 times less exposure than the FCC permits. If, the engineers actually showed me some figures where it actually breaks and the antennas point downwards, you'd still be about a factor of 10 below what the FCC permits. The FCC regulations, I should add, are extremely strict. They amount to heating that we would normally think of as kind of pleasant. You know, washing your hands in warm water would violate FCC regulations. Your head alone actually violates FCC regulations. If the FCC were to regulate our heads, but they don't. They regulate these. So the upshot is, is that there's, there's no bad health effects due to this at all.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on Zoom? I see a hand that went up here.
It's just the bottom. I can't hear you online. He's giving the product that's always up over there.
Then what, what we'll do is, if there's any other questions, I'm gonna ask you to move those chairs forward closer to the owl. Are there any other questions on Zoom? Any hands? Nope, nothing.
So just before you move to close.
Yep.
I just want to get on the record that we did have, we did go to town council for an opinion on this because normally, cell tower or anything, even a small, small cell tower would go under the planning board, under zoning. But we do have, we did ask the, the town attorney when this application came in. It's the first time it had come into the town of Southwick. And it's the town attorney's opinion that because this is located on existing infrastructure under the right of way, that this, that the statute under Mass General Law, Chapter 166, Section 22 and 22A, preempts town zoning, which would only be applicable to land outside of public way. But that Mass General Law, Chapter 166, Section 22, requires a public hearing with notice to a butters, mission, or fee. And publication allows both to have opportunity to participate, which is exactly what we're doing right this very minute. So I just wanted to get that out there in case there's any questions. Why this, this hearing's being held here. And, and also just, just as an aside, for the Verizon and Cell Co., as we are engaged in litigation regarding a cell tower rejection by the planning board, just a point of information, nothing germane to this, but as a point of information of Verizon and Cell Co. while you're here, that last week at town meeting, that the town voted to revamp our wireless communication bylaw in town. So it kind of gives you guys fair, fair notice that it's been updated and perhaps that might be applicable to look at in light of that cell tower application that's pending before the court at this time. That's all I have as to Vice Chairman.
Then I'm gonna ask for a motion to close the hearing.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. All right, roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perron. Okay. Would someone like to entertain making a motion to grant a location order to install and operate?
Doug Moglen will make that motion.
All right, roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perron. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, next thing up is we have. Okay. Get that to the right, Lieutenant. Chief Landis. Chief Landis, there he is. Yes, very good. Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Chief, if you could speak loudly. We're having a little problem. Hopefully, we're gonna be getting back to our regular room in the near future, and we won't have these problems.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Chief Landis, from the Police Department, and a friend, gentlemen, should have a request for us to explore a grant under the cops hiring program for an additional officer. And what I'm just asking at this point is that you allow us to apply for the grant. We've done some research. It is, in a nutshell, the grant is for three years, maximum award of $125,000 towards the salary over that three-year period. Your obligation is to retain that person for a fourth year after that. The $125,000 basically would probably cover the salary for an officer for about a year and a half, based on the current rates of pay. We would have to come up with a rest. My past proposal, Chief Bishop, Chief Accardi, all, when they've done their year-end plans and long terms, have always been for an additional officer pretty much every other year. We have an add-in addition, we have not added an additional body to complement our group since, it's probably been, probably eight years since we, we developed a court officer program, administrative program. And I believe Officer Sanders was the one that built as, as an addition. So we're up to 17 full-time staff. What this will allow us to do is, right now, our community policing programs, we do RAG, we do Citizens Police Academy, we do some CPR. Some of the stuff, it's just staffing, it's just, it's hard. You know, we, every, the guys that are involved with these programs, it just involves pulling them off shifts and then filling their shifts with, with personnel. One of the hurdles that we're seeing, and it's unfortunately common in our profession these days, is getting officers to work overtime. When they're off, they want, they enjoy their time off. It used to be an old, years ago, a lot of the old timers, you know, they worked every minute they possibly could. Officer mental health well-being is a huge topic these days, and finding time away from the job is very important to our people. So staffing is becoming an issue. It's just not, you know, Southwick is certainly every department across the country. So this is really a, a small step in a longer project, because I think to really make an impact, I don't think you're ever gonna see it improve. It may, you may decrease your overtime line item budget, but you're certainly gonna increase your salaries. So it's, it's a trade-off. But it helps you manage your staffing better by having those personnel. I think this is a goal to get to, but I think within the next eight years, you probably need to complement a total of three officers to truly make an impact. And being able to take advantage of this scenario here with the funding, I think, is, is, is a good course of action. Within that, after the fourth year, we're gonna be into a stage where, you know, people's lifestyles do change. But from what I can see, you're gonna be looking at a couple guys probably at their retirement age as well. And so certainly, you don't own this person after that. You could absorb them and you wouldn't rehire at that stage financially it wasn't in your best interest. So I just think that the timing, other than the fact that we need to have our paperwork in by June 9th, Sergeant Miles has already pretty much got everything together. But I'm just hoping that you guys see as we do, and that we at least investigate this opportunity.
Very good. Obviously, with the police reform, we know the, we're already under the gun. So, so to speak. Yeah. No pun intended. So something like this comes along. It's, it's a rare opportunity. And we've done this for other departments and other, where, where we've been successful in getting the Commonwealth and the federal government to pay salary to help us along. So for a small town, I think this is a worthwhile application. I certainly would be in support of it.
As would I, and especially with the pressures that the Reform Act is placing on the reserves, where that had been a traditional place for us to go, to build ships and, and have those guys step up, even Lake Patrol and, and stuff like that, where we've got budget and ships available that were unable to stab. Maybe this will, will also bring some help to that as well. So I would be in support of this as well.
Are you looking for a motion, Mr. Chairman, or?
I have no problem with this, obviously.
And we'll confirm motion.
So then I would make a motion to support the application.
And I will second.
All right, roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
All right, you have it. The green light.
All right, gentlemen. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anything else you'd like to talk about while you're right here? Now's your time.
I think we're good. I appreciate it. Thanks.
All right. Chief, before you go, I just wanna, I was gonna cover it under Old Business, but since you're here. I had the honor and privilege last week, thank you for the invitation, to go up to the Westwood Sportsman Club and watch some of our officers qualify for firearms training. The level of professionalism exhibited by the, the men qualifying, but even more so that the instructors and trainers is exemplary. And it was duly impressive. Thank you for allowing me to, to observe that. And thanks for telling the guys not to lose a round on me. But it was just very, very eye-opening, the amount of time and the amount of effort that goes into that and the stress, right? And I'm sure, I, I asked those guys too. Like, don't, don't be stressed that I'm standing here too. But, you know, they have only a certain, they have to put a certain number of rounds on the target. And if they miss even one round, they start over. And I think you get three cracks at it. And then you're sitting at a desk for a while until you're able to re-qualify. So it's an enormous pressure. You know, it's imagine you have to take your driver's test, you know, every couple of months in order to keep your job, right? It's a big deal. And, and it's, it's an awesome responsibility to carry out, to carry around, to carry a firearm. So the level of training that those guys go through in order to stay qualified and be proficient with that is, was amazing to watch. So thank you.
You're welcome. I encourage, you know, you and any members of other boards as well, our, their trainings, we started bringing you up the last time to the simunitions. I can sit here and talk about it all day. And there's nothing like being there and really seeing it. And I'm sure, it's like the drone, you know, knows firsthand that I've been through it. And again, I can tell you about it all day. And, but being there and actually visualizing and seeing it firsthand is totally different.
And for a couple of the guys, and only because I wasn't there, well, the female officers are reservists for shooting. So I say, guys, you could save a bunch of money next year. Cause a couple of guys, you don't need to target about that big, right?
Yes, some of them do.
They don't need the whole tour by day. It's amazing. Just amazing.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Good night, Chief.
Good night.
All right, next up is we need to reorganize the Select Board officers. So first, we need a motion for chairperson.
Mr. Fox, in line with tradition and protocol, I would set forth the nomination for yourself as chair.
You second?
I will second that.
All right, roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, we now need a motion for vice chairperson.
As a junior member, I'll make a motion for Mr. Moglen to be vice chairperson.
I will second that gladly. Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Jason Perron.
Doug Moglen, aye.
The clerk. The clerk for the select board.
I would nominate Jason Peron as the clerk for the select board.
I will second that nomination. We'll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogan, aye.
You might have to sign something once or twice.
A little bit, I think.
A binding issue.
And Jason, just so you know, in your first year, someone can ask you something, and your answer can be, I'm just a clerk. I've used it now a couple of times, it works out very well. I even have the T-shirt, I think so.
All right.
I like, let me get back to you on that. I'll find somebody that knows the answer.
That's a good one.
All right, next thing is to assign people to different things. The first thing is Capcom. So I'd like to, Mr. Mogan, would you take over Capcom, capital planning?
If you pass, I will serve.
Okay. I'd also like you to be the liaison to the Fire Department in DPW, if that's acceptable.
Sure.
Jason, because of your background, I'd like you to be the takeover local emergency planning committee. They meet monthly, LEPC. And also, if you'd be the liaison to the emergency management.
Absolutely.
Okay. If it's all right with everybody, I will be the liaison to the Police Finance Committee. And the next thing on here is, something I have always been doing, is signing for the warrant to payroll and payables. Is there any problem with that?
No objections.
Okay. Well, it's, 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 under the Reform Act, it used to be all three of us. But now they realize that since we already have CAO, accountant, the assistant town accountant, the auditor, there's enough checks and balances that one signature is enough. And it speeds up the process.
Okay. Just want to go back to page one and get your payables and your minutes.
Oh, there you have it. Thank you very much, Mr. Mogan.
The clerk may still.
Well, it's a good thing, because they had turned the page. Okay, acknowledged payables warrant number two-two-two-six-B dated five-seventeen-twenty-two, and the amount of five hundred nineteen thousand, four hundred fifty-three dollars, ninety-three cents. I also need a motion to accept the open session minutes dated five-seventeen-twenty-two.
Mogan will make the motion to accept the minutes.
Russ Fox will second that. We'll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Jason, you weren't there. Okay. So, now we're back on. All right, the next is a motion to authorize the chair slash CAO for hiring approvals and all other personnel actions below department head level. Something we've been doing since COVID. So if I can have that motion.
So moved.
I will second it.
All right, we'll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Jason, aye.
Okay. Another motion, authorize the chair to handle and municipal modernization act transfers between line items and finance committee reserve requests through six-thirty-twenty-two.
So moved.
Listen, Paul, a second.
All right, we'll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Jason, aye.
Okay. All right, the next thing I have is authorized letter of understanding with Sabrina Poehler as conservation and CPC coordinator, effective six-one-twenty-two. Need a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Jason, aye.
It looks important, Jason. This is when I hand it back to you, you get back to.
That's the first job, right.
We don't lose it. Right. Okay. Next, and then motion to ratify the select board chair sign-off on a master plan fifty thousand dollar grant to E O E E A through the planning board with the PVC assistance.
I'll make the motion for the E O E A grant through Pioneer Valley Planning Commission.
I will second.
Okay, we'll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Jason, I'm sorry.
Doug Mogan, aye.
A little excited, I guess. Jason Peron, aye.
Okay. Okay. We've taken care of that. Let's compare the white pile. All right, next up. Discussion and approved DPW transfer station fiscal twenty-three fee schedules and facility regulations. Is Randy here? Randy on Zoom?
Yes, I'm on Zoom, how are you guys?
All right, before we do that, Randy, I see that you submitted another letter concerning Hudson Drive to Sam West and Powder Mill Road. Do you want to discuss that first, before we go to the transfer station?
Sure, so you may have heard the term community one-stop program. This is a conglomerate of several state agency where there's grant opportunities available. So we are looking to apply for two projects. One would be the Hudson Drive to Sam West Road Connector. If you recall, about a year, maybe a year and a half ago, we got a grant through the slight readiness program to do a feasibility study on that project. We're looking to advance that to the next stage, which be, which should be to initiate the design permitting efforts for that project. That would be through this community one-stop program. And the second, second project is Powder Mill Road sidewalk extension. It's something that's come up with the board a couple of times over the past few years. We think that this would be a good time to look for some funds through this program for that sidewalk extension.
Thank you, Randy, so we need a motion to submit those two grant applications?
And this, this one-stop permitting portal is a great way to, it's kind of like a clearinghouse, so you can submit to it, and then different state agencies basically step up and show you where there may be avenues for funding or grants available. So the Hudson Drive-Sam West Connector's been on a point of discussion for, I don't know, fifteen-plus years now, so it's great to see that moving forward. And the Powder Mill sidewalk project has been an ongoing thing. We've talked about safety to schools and different other avenues, so we'll take another crack at this. I'll gladly set forth that motion for both of these projects.
And I will second.
All right, we'll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Jason, aye.
All right, Randy, you got the green light on those. All right. Now we're to the transfer station, and everybody's got the, your information in front of them. Your recommendation for this year, Randy?
Well, I guess there's a couple of options, you know, one, so first of all, as you probably know, so the revenue we collect through user fees only offsets about forty percent of the cost to operate the facility. So there's always a contribution by the general fund to offset the rest of the cost. So what I did in this table here is show the revenue that we've received for the past six or seven years, compare that to the operating expenses, and then the delta is what's covered by the general fund. So this year, and upcoming fiscal year twenty-three, there should be a two to three percent increase in operating costs, primarily due to salaries and also due to our disposal contract for trash. All the other costs seem to be pretty steady where they were last fiscal year. So if you want to basically cover that, that change from last fiscal year, I would recommend the first line, which was a three percent increase. The stickers on the second page, I list the annual sticker fee and the C N S's sticker fee at that rate. And that would bring in additional five, eight thousand dollars per year for that fiscal year, which would be enough to cover that increase. But if the board's looking to try to narrow down that deficit, there's some other options in here if you're looking for an additional increase to the sticker fees.
Discussion?
I just had a question, Randy, are you starting to see a rebound in the, in offsets for recyclables? I know we had gone from we were getting money for recyclables to where we were paying for recyclables. Now the market seems to be turning again. Hopefully, you're seeing additional revenues from cardboard bottles, et cetera.
Yeah, it's, it's a commodity, so it fluctuates like the stock market. So a year ago, we were, I think maybe a year and a half ago, we were paying for recyclables, actually paying more money to get recyclables than we're paying for trash, if you can believe that or not. The market did turn, did a one-eighty, and we were actually giving, getting some good revenue for the past twelve months for recyclables. But I can tell you that the commodity has dipped a little bit. So we are still getting some revenue, but not at the rate that we were about twelve months ago. So I haven't checked the latest sheet, but I think we're getting somewhere between four to five dollars per ton for recyclables. We were getting upwards of twelve to fifteen dollars per ton as of maybe twelve months ago. So a little bit, we're getting a little bit, covering, covering our expenses, basically. But you never know where that's gonna, where that's gonna, where that's gonna move down the road.
Thank you, Randy.
Jason, what do you think? Pretty self-explanatory.
Okay. Well, I'm going to throw out and suggest that we go with Randy's recommendation. The only thing I would do is that, so that we have an even number, I would do, move the town resident from one thirty-five to one forty, and the senior discount, or senior citizen sticker from seventy-five to eighty. So that would be something I would throw in as a suggestion. I'll make that motion.
Can I make a phrase of fee on my first meeting?
Lucky we didn't make you make a.
In the frying pan, boy, in the frying pan.
I will second it.
Okay. We'll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Jason, aye.
All right. That, absolutely, nobody likes to raise any fees, nobody likes to see taxes go up, but.
We're adding that much with the diesel.
Right, right, it's only a three percent. All right, next thing we're going to is, we're going to be discussing the DPW Grant MVP Grant Amendment for Claus Anderson Road Culvert Project. That's, boy, it seems like we've been working on this for years now. That's where we had the Lieutenant Governor out, this is a municipal vulnerability preparedness program. It'll be replacing the Culvert Claus Anderson before you get to Curtis Road. It's experienced severe flooding. It's, it's grown up, it's the whole area, it's just a bad situation. By getting this grant of seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred, that's, that goes a long way in curing that.
And even better, if the amendment itself that we're being faced with here is the, they're actually going to send us the six hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars of the seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in advance, and then, and then the remaining hundred thousand in the next fiscal year. Randy surmises that the other projects are not moving as expediently as ours. So even though ours is moving slowly, it's moving less slowly than others. So this will put the cash on hand, so that we can, as we progress through the project, we will have to lay out the money and they get reimbursed, like short-term borrowings and so on. So this is a great amendment.
It's unprecedented.
I'd gladly make a motion to sign and execute the addendum to the contract.
Okay.
I need a second. I will second it.
Okay, we'll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Jason, aye.
Well, we already did, let's put that one out of order. Okay, so now our next is to a motion to accept a five hundred dollar donation to the Southwick Police Department from Southwick Acres, Inc. I believe in our last meeting, they donated five hundred to the Fire Department, or am I mistaken?
Yes.
Let's say, that's very generous, five hundred to the Fire Department, now five hundred to the Police, Southwick Police Gift Fund. So I need a motion to accept that donation.
Doug Mogan will make a motion to accept that donation with our thanks.
Jason, a second.
We'll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Jason, aye.
All right, next up, Town Hall Roof Bid Award. Gentlemen, Mr. Lawler, Mr. Sutton. So Lawler is our former building inspector, and he was clerk of the works at the Fire Department Roof Project, and will be clerk of the works at the Town Hall Roof Project. Mr. Sutton is our Director of Buildings and Grounds. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, it looks like we have a recommended bid. Do you want to talk to us about it?
Sure. The recommended bid is actually the second highest, but the lowest bid withdrew. He sent us a letter of withdrawal because he realized he had made a miscalculation in his estimate. It was a couple hundred thousand dollars less than everybody else. So when he saw the bids, he knew he was in trouble if he was awarded that job. So the Young Development LLC is the successful bidder on this. And the architect has vetted him, and I did due diligence for the town in checking references with other towns and commercial jobs that he's done. And he's come out with flying colors all around. I even talked to some of the general contractors that he's worked through, and everybody loves him. Then one guy in Connecticut, he said, I wouldn't use anybody else. And he's done all kinds of roofs, sawtooth, barrel roofs, flat roofs, steep pitch, you name it. So they're, they've been around a long time, very well qualified, Sarnfield certified. I think they're going to do a great job for us.
To be clear, Art, just because I think this was the second lowest bidder, correct?
It was, but once the actual lowest bidder withdrew.
But I think you misspoke when you, when you were saying you said the second highest bidder.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And just also as a point of reference, the highest bidder was, was the one who did the roof at the firehouse this time, correct?
They were, that is correct.
Yeah, they were the high bidder. That's unfortunate. Okay.
All right, well, we all know it needs to be done. We've got the approval of the voters at the annual town meeting. So I need someone to make that motion as read, as written. Want to read it? Motion to award the Town Hall Roof Bid Submission from Young Developers LLC of Handen, Connecticut for nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars, as recommended by Russo Bar Designers and authorized the select board to enter into a contract for same and any other related actions. So moved.
Second.
All right, we'll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Jason, aye.
All right, start building.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate all the effort you guys have been putting into this and the HVAC. All right, next thing we have. Well. Paperwork went, it was a, it was an email. Okay. Next thing up is the Keno Application for Lake Life one oh one. This is something that we get, Jason, on a regular basis, and, you know, you'd have to, if you had a problem, you could respond to it. I don't think we've ever had a problem yet, and we responded to one of these, so. I don't believe that we need to take any action whatsoever. Is that your understanding, Mr. Mogan?
Yeah, I don't think we have a reason to take action to stop. It's by omission, right? If you, if you don't object, they approve.
Correct. Correct. All right, so Keno is making the mass lottery a lot of money, and we eventually get some of that money.
About a million bucks a year, right?
Right, so we'll take it. All right, next up is a request or to see if we want to place another banner ad for the graduating class of twenty-twenty-two from Southwick Regional. This would be, if we do approve, it's something that comes out of our selection gift account. That's money that's donated to the select board. So. So last year, we did an $80 ad for our graduates.
It's still $80, right?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to place that ad using funds from the Select Board Gift Account.
I'll second that one.
All right, we'll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason, aye.
Robin, you wanna give them the heads up? Because graduation is gonna be here pretty quick. The next thing is a warrant, fiscal warrant for community development block grant fiscal 20 in amount of $3,853.52. Need a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason, aye.
Robin, you have the original, or do you want us just to sign this one? Don't worry about that. Don't worry about that. Somebody will fill that blank in. Again, Jason, the most important law.
Good job.
Good job. See? They're already trained. All right, we're moving on to new business. First thing, it's Channel 15, Everything Southwick Show. Peter has reached out to the town to see if we're interested in how we'd like to do it. I wanna thank Mr. Mogul on very short notice, who went up and filled in with future Fire Chief Conowitz. I did watch it later on. You guys did an excellent job and represented the town very well, very well. It's very, it was it was very rewarding to anybody that watched it. I kicked this around with Carl, and he he came up with the that we would, you know, change it up on a monthly basis. It's the third Wednesday of every month, and so when Carl gets back, we'll just have him make up a schedule. That's okay. All right. Next thing is summer schedule. Well, I took the liberty of, you know, a couple of suggestions, Robin. Obviously, we're not gonna be meeting next week because it's Memorial Day. And we do have an invitation for the ceremony from the American Legion. We'll meet at 9:30 at the house. And then proceed down to the Town Green, where they do the presentation, and then they go by motorcar to the old cemetery and new cemetery. We don't march anywhere. All right, so we won't be meeting on the 30th, but we have some things that we need to get done, so I'm gonna suggest that we're meeting June 6th, June 13th, and then go on our summer schedule on Monday, June 20th, by no meeting, and then alternate for the rest of the summer. That'd be my suggestion.
No objection, I guess.
Should be fine. Right.
If you see I made any mistakes, we can correct it at our next meeting. All right, okay. Going on to old business and dates to remember. The first thing up is discuss two-year license for limited use of real property on Beach Road and Congamon Road, 141 Congamon Road. And we got letters from legal counsel, we got we've had the applicant speak under public comments, we've had letters from LMC, we've had letters from Citizen Restoring Congamon. I talked to Mr. Grant Ellis this morning, Chairman of that, to go over his legitimate concerns. And then I did see John Goddard, our part-time planner, over what the Planning Board had done and what the what issues they were trying to address, so. Based on that, we tabled this, we didn't take action on this because of the transition, so. You wanna kick off the discussions?
I think we've the Planning Board has their, that's on their agenda, I think it's tomorrow night, that they're coming in for a modification of their special permit application. So be interesting to see what what's changing in the proposal there. And then they, I had been on a site tour of the facility three weeks ago, maybe almost four weeks ago. And there was no record yet of the Chapter 91 application with the state. So they were still chasing that down with between Lebec and Mr. Eggleston. But I think in the grand scheme of things, as far as the the parking to be able to be able to operate the the restaurant piece, the license, I don't think is a big obstacle. And I think we heard it tonight during public comment, and we've heard it throughout, the common theme through all this is no one wants to see this facility remain closed and continuing to decay and basically slowly collapse onto itself. So having that place open. The other take on it to look, and it's a real, I think it's a real thing that you have to look at the totality of it is, isn't economically viable without a marina? And one could have that discussion, and I think it's part of, it has to be part of the overall consideration of how you're gonna, how that's gonna operate. If without the marina, I don't know that that facility is is long-term successful. So how they configure, if if the marina can be configured, and and this is part of the process, and I deeply respect Lake Management's input on this and CRC, I've heard from our neighbors on the other side of the pond, not England. And you know, there's, I I haven't had a single person tell me that they don't wanna see this place open. It, you know, we just wanna see it sit there and rot. So I think that the marina has to be part of the discussion, and there's also been no argument about the transient docks, about having people, you know, float up or and dock at the place and and use the the new restaurant. So I think there has to be a way, and there should be a, there should be a way forward and a compromise solution in order to enable the marina and configure it in such a manner that it's not a hazard for navigation. And that needs to be worked out by parties other than this board in cooperation with the Harbor Master, who's really the chief of safety on the lake and whose whose opinion I also value and has weighed in on this application in in previous meetings through the Planning Board and back to Lake Management. So I have no issue with the license. I think it's a legal piece to allow the rest of the application to proceed. It was part of the Planning Board documentation as far as if they were able to secure the rights to utilize the parking, then they could have, they could further their application. They still have the Chapter 91 piece to go through, and I believe that everyone's been very cooperative with each other and not, you know, it's adversarial at times, as it should be. But I think that there's a way forward here, and I think the license is one piece of it. And it's the easiest part of it as far as the legality of it, when we looked into it, that we're able to enter into a license agreement to allow that restaurant to come open.
Are you familiar with it?
I've listened in on some of it. And I agree with what Doug said about it being viable. I'm not a big fan of the marina myself. But, you know, there's compromises that can be looked at, and CRC offered to take us out there. You know, I think we should all look at that, too.
Well, what we're talking about here is basically a license, it's a two-year agreement that can be revoked 90 days, correct? One to eight. So I think it was the intent of the Select Board, you know, along with several other people, is to to try to get the restaurant reopened so that it it becomes a viable business. I agree with Jason. I'm not a big fan of any more marinas, you know, especially after talking to Mr. Grant Ellis. But but I don't think by taking action on this, it is going to cause any problem. It allows due process to go forward, to see if there isn't any, any as Mr. Mogul said, some sort of compromise, so. So I I would accept the motion to approve this license, if someone wants to make that motion.
And and the last thing I just wanna point out before I will set forth the motion to execute the license is that Mr. Eggleston's done. He's worked with the town and worked with the various boards and commissions. I think a lot of it, he got a little bit of bad advice upfront, but once he's kind of got his ship pointed in the right direction, I think he's been, he's been trying to work with every board and commission in town to try to get to the end result of what everyone's kind of looking for, if we can get this restaurant back open. So I'll put forth that motion.
And I think probably also, maybe you wanna talk about it a little bit more, is this 91 application. This is really Commonwealth Massachusetts, you know, they, it's their decision. You know, even though we do do a lot for the lakes, take care of the lakes, yeah, these are great ponds and Commonwealth Massachusetts, making those kind of decisions. That gives everybody an opportunity to put in, you know, their concerns before any license is issued, so. All right, so a motion is made.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Eric Miller's got, he's on Zoom, wondering if you can make a comment.
Not at this time, no, sorry. Is there a second?
So my understanding is this is just a license to get this place open more.
It's, this is a license that was drawn up by Town Council, which is, gives them the right to use right away for parking.
Okay.
This was something that the Planning Board, when the Planning Board met me, this was part of their discussion. So their attorney met with Town Council. It's it's not a lease, it's a license, and it can be revoked in 90 days.
I'll make that something.
Okay, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason, aye.
Okay. All right. Next thing we got is, we're still keeping the North Pond violations, fishing game agreement at some point. Yeah, go ahead. At some point, we're going to have to bring in the Conservation Commission to see exactly where we are with that and also with the fishing game. But we will wait until our new Conservation Coordinator has had an opportunity to get her feet wet so that we're all apprised at the same time. The next thing, Town Hall Roof Design, I think we can remove that, Robin, and just put down HVAC design work. And then we're going over to the sewer system IMA with the city of Westfield, that's our agreement with Westfield. Sewer agreement when we first started searing in Southwood was is treated at the Westfield facility. That agreement is going to be expiring in the near future. So it's, believe it or not, you have to start a few years ahead to get that agreement up. Hopefully, hopefully, we're going to get a better agreement. The first one, I don't think was the best agreement for the town of Southwood, so. You know anybody in Westfield with any influence, especially on their city council?
The council I can work with, the mayor, I don't know about that.
All right, well, work with the council. All right, next, Board and Committee Procedures to Notify Appointment Members in Process, I believe.
Yep.
I've seen letters go out.
Mr. Chairman, we, Robin and I met last week. We met with the town clerk and the assistant, and we developed a list, what we believe is complete and correct, of all terms that are expiring. And we have sent a letter to the chair of each committee that has those people on it. And then we've also sent a letter, if we didn't have their email on file, we put it in the snail mail, to each person whose term is expiring, to ask them if they want to continue to serve in some fashion, or would like to continue to serve, and to submit a letter of interest. So we have that on record. I know as the chair of one sub, I got that actual letter from Robin, it was a good test, so came out great. So every chair should have those by now, and we've asked to have them in in a couple of weeks, right, Robin?
Yes.
Couple of weeks back to us so that we can start planning meeting agenda postings on the summer schedule to make appointments and such going forward.
Okay. I did have one group reach out to me with a question. They both advised, since they're were appointed to bring us forward to that, we need to be reappointed annually.
It's the, that's the statutory term. I don't know if that's by, if the, I'd have to talk to Michelle Hill to understand if if the Board of Selectmen could take a vote at the next appointment to extend the term, because it's an ad hoc advisory committee, right? It's not a statutory committee, like. We could, we could elect at that time to make it now a two-year or three-year appointment, if you'd like, right? But if the term was one year, what we voted it when we did it, then it's one year.
Okay, okay, but, you know, because they did make the argument, it does make sense that if if you're appointed to an ad hoc committee to achieve a certain goal, you'd want that committee to achieve a certain goal.
Agreed, right.
So.
But I think even the high-speed internet was also a one-year appointment, right? And even though we've been at it for a couple of years, right?
Yeah, okay, you see what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Deputy Fire Chief Recruitment Process. Town meeting is ended. I think that we need to start that process. You are going to be the liaison to the Fire Department. Would you like to begin the initial conversations with the CIO and Labor Council?
I'd be like, okay.
And be, get us up to speed, you know, as far as the the committee that'll be doing the initial interviews and before they bring whether two or three finalists to this board.
Yep.
Okay, I've already said that the American Legion Parade is Monday, the 30th. We will be, the parade kicks off at 10:00 a.m. on College Highway across from the Summer House. We'll proceed down to the Congregational Church, Town Green, where the main ceremony will take place. And then from there, it will be by motorcar down to the old cemetery and then the new cemetery. So it is open to the public. We encourage people to attend. Normally, the American Legion also invites people back to their facility after the parade. So it's an opportunity for people to come out and remember those that gave the greatest sacrifice for our country. Next, the Council on Aging Luncheon. Were you notified about that?
I was not.
Okay, there's a Council on Aging Luncheon this Wednesday at noon. We'll have to check with, Robin, can you check with Cindy tomorrow about Jason?
It can be accommodated, no problem.
You know.
It's noon?
Yeah, noon at Tucker.
All right, all right, you can work that out with Robin, but it's 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 a luncheon to honor the volunteers. And it's not a mandatory thing to go to, but you're
Yeah, I wanna get my seat booked.
So, okay. All right. Next thing is the, we already did that.
Yep.
Okay, and then we have a Master Plan Subcommittee Update.
Yep, so Master Plan, I haven't updated this board in a couple of meetings, so I figured I would, and Jason coming on board. Master Plan Subcommittee continues to meet and has taken a lesson from the Planning Board and has managed to run meetings past 10 o'clock the last two meetings. They've been working very, very hard on the survey that's supposed to go out in the next month. They've got it boiled down. They've they've gone through it in a lot of detail as to to try to get the right kind of questions onto the survey. And they've worked very hard to eliminate. Kind of survey bias, right? If you ask a certain question a certain way, you get a certain answer, but they've done a great job of trying to take that out. They've also started some social media outreach and they also have a website that this board approved that's starting to, that they're starting to work on. But look for that master plan survey to come out within the next month. We have one more meeting to. I think we finished the survey part, but we have one more meeting coming up in a couple of weeks. To continue our work, let that board continues to march on and town meeting in the budget. Did approve the second half of the funding for the master plan, so it looks like the funding for that overall master plan is now secure.
Good. Thank you, Doug, for representing the board on that. All right, I neglected to, under new business, did you have any new business?
No, it's all old business.
Jason, a new business.
Awesome.
Okay, and then back to old business. Doug, any old business?
Good thing. We covered a few of them already, so. First, high-speed internet's up. I had a few people email me as to what's going on because we sent out letters of reappointment. We appointed a couple of people and still haven't met. I am waiting to hear from Whip City Fiber on a date that works for everybody that we can all get together. So as soon as I have that date, within the next couple of weeks, we will meet. I realize that we're heading into the summer season and it starts to get a little dicey, so I want to move that together. But also under old business with our push and encouragement to continue the hybrid Zoom meetings. I wanted to note that the land use room, the conference room in the hallway here, I don't know what the official term of that room is, and. The select board conference room are now equipped with proper screens on the wall and wireless. Display capability so that they can continue to more easily utilize the hybrid meeting. And lastly, I just wanted to get out there for anyone who's here or listening or going to watch the recording of this. I believe it's next Friday afternoon. It's a tradition that started during COVID and I'm glad to see it continue. Is that there'll be a drive around the town of Southwick, recognizing the graduating seniors. I believe it kicks off around four o'clock from the high school. And then it goes all the way up to Granville, comes back down, the roots on the website. I don't know all of it. But I know during COVID, it was kind of a a great thing. There was a lot of people that came out because we were, a lot of people were locked up in their house, but still, even last year as well. It's a great event for the seniors to recognize all the hard work they put in, so. Check the website on Facebook or the Southwick Colling Granville. Regional website to get the map of where they're going to be and when, so that you can come out and cheer them on.
Jason, any old business?
No, sir.
All right, the only thing I had under old business is, is Robin, if you could. Have tie and bond report put on the old business. So that we can review that. The tie and bond report, Jason, is. We requested, it's about five years ago now. To analyze all the needs of all town buildings and to identify that. At that particular time, they came up with a list, you know, prioritized list. And it was in the neighborhood of over thirty million dollars at that time, with inflation probably we're close to forty million dollars at this time. And one of the first two that were identified were the fire station roof and the roof here at this building, you know. The reason why I think we need to get it out there and publicize it more because there was a, somebody at the. Town meeting and said something about, why weren't you planning on doing this roof sooner? We've been planning on doing this roof for over five years and even the design of this roof was voted at the town meeting last year, so. It's something that we're very well aware of and our other structures after this one will be the police department will be done next. But we have to prioritize because we're talking about, every time we're talking about it. That one million or this, in this case with the age back, it's going to be over two million dollars, so. I think we need to have that report front and center so people realize. The amount of money that we're going to have to come up with over the next ten years, so. It's it's a, it's going to be a challenge, a major challenge, and luckily, we've been successful in some grants. Luckily, we got that ARPA money, so we were able to accomplish a couple of things, so. Going forward, we want to make sure that everybody is well aware of that, so I think by having it on front and center. Make sure we review it and talk about it. All right.
I forgot one thing.
Okay, we're going back to you.
I see Randy Brown is still on the on the Zoom. Now that we passed the budget. It's probably time that. Yourself, myself, Randy and Jason schedule our annual tour of the roads. Right, I know we've all, we haven't had a chance yet, but you will. Get about one billion complaints about the roads in the town of Southwick.
We're still working, I still work on this.
But so I know what it's like. I get it, so every year, we we typically take a morning and basically drive around town and kind of find the worst ones. We do have a pavement management plan, right, that kind of takes the politics and everything out of it, but every year, there's a couple that jump off the pages. Either they're deteriorating faster than what they're supposed to or they've just reached a tipping point. So we usually go around and then we kind of do the math and say, okay, this is this and this is this, and then we get a list. We don't discuss it that day because that, we don't post it as a meeting, so we can't discuss anything, but then we come back. In an open meeting and discuss that list and then we kind of take the money, put the streets and then try to figure it out, right? It's exactly what it is, kind of just drive around and. Figure it out, but we probably should get that on this, on the docket sooner than later while the weather's kind of nice.
Absolutely, I know that there are several roads in the process right now, but we want to keep keep that process going.
Yep.
And it's the beta program, if you ever want to. You know, we. Voters allow us to. The money to enter into that. It does analyze the conditions of different roads and like Mr. Morgan said, it takes the politics out of it. It, you know, looks at traffic counts, safety.
Politics involved in that?
In roads.
You wouldn't even believe it.
You wouldn't believe it. When you get some irate neighborhoods in here saying our road is the most important road in town of Southwood.
And and it was a rough winter. There's a lot of roads in rough shape.
There most certainly are, and I I try to tell people it's not just Southwick, it's all over, like you said, you see it where you live.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that concludes the agenda. Is there need for an executive session tonight? It's not on the agenda, so that took care of that.
Here that need right there. Mr. Chairman, to make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
All right, we'll call vote, Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowgli, I.
There you go.